Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting, October 26, 2015. It's now about eight after six. Would you all rise and pledge allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, first items. Minutes of business meeting of October 14th. Everybody had a chance to read them, hopefully. If you have, and if there's no questions, then entertain a motion.
Motion to approve?
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Citizens input. A little early yet, right? Communications. Do we have anything? I'm getting to you as fast as I can. Okay, new business. Action item. Exchange Club's toll booth on 11/7/2015. The rain date will be 11/14/2015. Would you state your name for the record, please?
Evelyn Flavon.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, as the Board knows, this is an annual request that we've received from the Exchange Club. You actually have in your packet a copy of the toll booth policy, which actually spells out the Spencer Exchange Club's request every November. So with that, everyone's here tonight to make that request in person. You have the dates and the rain date. Do you have the time in which you guys will do it?
11 to 1.
11 to 1.
We do, actually, in the center of Spencer, we do two shifts, excuse me, 9 to 11, and then 11 to 1, and then at the transfer station, we do 9 to 12.
Through the chair, can we make sure with the, last time they went down there, there was, or another organization went down, there was somebody else at the transfer station?
Right.
We found out that people were scheduling outside of, they were scheduling those types of things down at the transfer station?
Before coming to the board.
Right. So, it's probably, nothing's happening, probably, but just make sure there's no one down there with these folks.
Yeah, we can make sure. I'll make sure. Anyone that wants to do any kind of activity down there needs to go through Steve Tyler at the UNF office, so, but I'll make sure that he knows that they're lined up for those dates.
Thank you.
Perfect. That being said, any other questions from the board?
Just to remind folks of the purpose to which the funds will be placed and...
It goes along with our mission with the Exchange Club, which is child abuse prevention and supporting other charities in town.
Okay. In the past, has the, was it devoted to winter coats or something like that?
It's a warm clothing fund as well.
Okay. All right. That's the time of year, and I recall that. Okay. Great.
When we set up this bylaw, we did it with the intention of making sure that the Exchange Club had their toll booth every year, so this is something that they do every year, so...
Off for a good cause.
Yeah, it's off for a good cause. So, having said that, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Exchange Club toll booth on 11/7, rain date of 11/14/15, for the Exchange Club.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. They're all set.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you, everyone.
Nice to meet you, too.
Will we be getting an email as to how we sign up if we can't go to the meetings?
Well, I send out an email, a notice of the Spencer Exchange Club meetings.
Yeah.
Yeah, I send them out regularly.
Okay.
I believe you're on that list.
Yeah, I'm on that list. I know the sign up would be in there, or...
It will go around, yes.
Super.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item. 2015, 2016, winter parking ban. Hopefully, we also note Sergeant Bedford on this.
Right, so the only note is, there's only one change that's being proposed, and that's on Water Street. If you recall, there was improvements last year that were done with the infrastructure there, and as part of that, Mr. Tyler came and asked about no parking on that street. There was no, there wasn't any there anyway, but in terms of formalizing it, in terms of, it's been on this list, so, or needs to be added to this list, I should say.
And while we're talking about that, have we made our minds up on Mechanic Street yet?
We have not, in terms of winter parking. We haven't made any decisions yet.
A parking period?
We don't want to stripe it or do anything until next spring. So the signs that were up there before are up there now, I believe.
Yeah, but...
But we're not striping it and made any decisions about one way, so angle parking and all that.
I parked there, and another guy picked up, parked on the other side, and nobody can get through the middle. We've got to do something with that before we do.
Right, so the condition that's there now is the same condition that we've had, right?
Well, it's worse with that besides the...
So, what we envision for in the spring, before we do the final paving there, is that we would have a public hearing, and we'd get everybody on the street that's involved, post office, the businesses down there, and come up with a plan, have our engineer draft a plan of where...
We just should have parking on one side of the street.
Should we not do one?
Just one side of the street, because you, like I said, there's my pickup, another pickup, your car can't get through.
But as part of that, we're not just going to eliminate 15 spaces from the businesses down there. As part of the whole plan about doing that, it's one of the things I have on here for the time being warrant, is to have money to look at the Mechanic Street parking lot down there, and also possibly looking at doing a plan with one of the other buildings that we own through tax title down there. So, before we take parking away by making it one side of parking, we want to make sure that we're putting parking back in there, because parking is an issue there.
What I'm saying is, when you get snow on the road, you're only going to be able to park on one side.
Well, how's it done, how has it been done in the past? What was the rule before?
Well, when this, when this, the road was at least a foot wider before, okay?
And there was no restrictions.
And there was no restriction, but when you plow in the wintertime, you can only park on one side of the street, so why don't we just make it that way now?
Well, you have, well, we're talking about two different things. One is winter parking ban, and one is the regular parking.
Yeah, this, yeah, but...
So this is just, as far as the winter parking ban goes, Mechanic Street is on here right now, on top, no change. That's not changing.
Yeah, but you just can't...
So as far as the snow plowing issue, we can, we can talk about this without, talking about Mechanic Street, right?
I think it's just too different.
Well, I think if you just make the thing, whether it's summer and winter, you're going to have to do it. That's what I'm saying.
In terms of making no parking on the one side, right.
Yeah.
But separate discussion. We agree it's a separate discussion than this.
Right now, this is...
This is just strictly winter parking ban. Mechanic Street's on here right now, no parking on either side of the street.
But I think...
Right?
There'd never been at night, never.
So we're not changing anything to do that. Okay, so let's get through this, and then let's come back.
Because I think what Mr. Fritz's concern is, is those burned, I mean, the granite is now, I think it lost eight inches overall, both sides.
It's about five and a half inches thick, I measured it the other day.
Understandable, but his point is not affecting this right now.
No, there's no parking in the winter from 11 till 6.
Correct, and that's what's on here.
Which is what we're talking about now.
That's already on here, so the only change, that's on here now, Mechanic Street...
Water Street is added to the list up top.
Correct.
Okay.
It wasn't listed there before.
Right.
It was, there was no parking there before, only because people didn't park there, but now it's formally listed as no parking on the street, as part of the infrastructure improvements that we made last year.
That's fine.
So we've never seen a single car or straggler on there, parking on that road?
No.
On Water Street.
And then, so what Steve did is, part of doing infrastructure improvements, he's revisiting certain parking issues. So if you recall, we had the Adams Street issue, Muzzin Pond, that whole issue, so that, and this, Water Street was part of that discussion as well. When Steve came and said, "Let's make a formal vote, no parking, they can go ahead and put up signs," it's now added to the top of this list, as part of that discussion, if you recall.
Any other questions from the board?
Nope.
That being said...
I'll make a motion to approve the winter parking ban for the 2015, 2016 season?
As amended.
As amended.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, the only thing, Adam, is we're going to make sure this gets posted again, right?
It gets posted on our website, and I believe the police walk around with it as well, and the people that are potential violators.
What they do is they go around, they put this on your windshield if you're in violation for the first week.
Right. Exactly.
So you know, yeah.
I understand.
Just telling you.
You mean this is the policy?
Yeah.
Put one of these right on the back. Okay. You're holding the agenda. I wasn't sure what you were referring to. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
This paper here, okay?
Okay, that's, that's fair.
That's what happens. Okay, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm against it.
I'm sorry, I missed the second. Who seconded it? Tony?
John seconded it.
John seconded it?
I'm against it.
What are you against now?
I don't want any parking. That's been my thing since I've been here, because it's a pain in the butt to plow with cars all over the place.
I don't think we put someone on the list for future consideration.
And there's no, there's no, there's only one house we looked at that did have a driveway, okay? And that's bullshit.
Okay.
Excuse my French.
No, sure.
I park on the lawn in the wintertime in my yards to keep, you know, keep the cars off the road. Everybody else does the same thing.
We're in agreement. It's just that two different things, that's all.
We're not done.
No, it's the same thing.
You can revisit this issue formally.
You take your parking ban and stuff it.
There's enforcement issues up there from that standpoint.
Okay, old business. Now that Mr. Fritz is quiet, none.
You can't be going.
It's not hard to do.
It isn't either. Town administrators report. Mr. Administrator?
So, in front of you, I have a few items related to the Fall Town Meeting warrant budget and the calendar as well. What we'd like to do tonight is vote to close the Fall Special Town Meeting warrant. So we'll go through the final budget changes and final warrant articles with any changes. Just a one last look at the calendar. We would be the selectmen tonight closing the meeting. Capital planning is meeting tomorrow night with staff to go over the capital requests that are proposed to be included on the draft warrant. And then, just for everyone's notification purposes at home, the last day for us to post a special town meeting warrant is November 5th by statute. We're going to definitely meet that, but for the public, November 9th is the last day to register to vote and be eligible to vote at the special town meeting on the 19th. And town clerk's open until 8:00 PM that evening. November 10th, we'll be meeting with the Finance Committee to review the special town meeting warrant, and the 17th, Capital Planning Committee will finalize their recommendations, as well as the Finance Committee meeting that night, and finalizing their recommendations on the warrant articles. Again, the Fall Special Town Meeting is 7:00 PM, Thursday, November 19th, at the Great Hall here at Town Hall. That's the Thursday the week before Thanksgiving. And then we'll finalize our annual tax rate procedures with the tax classification hearing with the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Assessors on November 23rd. We'll submit our recap sheet to DOR for approval, and then we'll finalize our bills before the end of the year. So any final questions on the calendar moving forward? We've gone over it several times.
What time's the meeting?
7:00 PM, Thursday night, November 19th.
Capital and Finance is what time?
The Finance Committee meeting meets at 7:00 PM, and the Capital Committee meets at 5:30.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Okay, so I guess the next thing to do is just to finalize the budget changes sheet in the Performer, which is, so the Excel spreadsheets and charts that you have, and then the last thing we'll do is go through the warrant, and then if everything's okay, we can close the warrant, and then we'll have some discussion if there's any needed. So on the budget sheet, the only thing I changed since last week was, if you look down, one, two, about five or six lines, you'll see I shifted $3,000 from the treasurer expense to, $3,000 to increase payroll and salaries in that. We had consultant, money reserved for consultant services to do something, and I'm going to shift that, $3,000, we don't need that, and I'd like to move it into the treasurer collector's salary item for just some additional hours to try and like finalize it, all the procedures that we have related to the tax recap, get everything done out in time, and it's needed in that office, so. It's available money, it's no increase in taxes or anything, it's just a shift in that one particular department. Anytime you shift line items within a department between salary and expenses, it has to go through town meeting, so that's one of the things that'll be done on here. It's done several other departments, too, as accounting and elections, so that's the only thing I've changed.
So that's why you're going from, it just...
So it doesn't change, if you look down, it does not change the net line adjustments, LA. That 1-19004 was the same as last week. Does not change the bottom chart where it says 1-2814, does not change 31. Any of those numbers down below do not change. So the overall budget number overall will stay the same, it's just a shift in line item accounts.
It's still a zero balance.
Still a zero balance, okay? So I just wanted to give you a heads up on that, one change.
And that move was from, just to make it, to state it, it went from, because it's a 57 account.
Right.
It's from consultants to salary.
Correct. Okay. So the Performance page is what you have, next two pages. The only changes that you have here are on the bottom, so the first page, which is revenues, at the very bottom, you'll see sewer retained earnings, capital plan, $200,000. Last week, that number was 125. So after working with the consultants, the sewer department, sewer commissioners, and the superintendent, working with their engineer in terms of the amount of potential costs related to repairing the clarifiers at the plant, wastewater treatment plant, preliminary numbers are pushing that number a lot higher than originally planned at 125. So you'll see that 200 on page one, and then that 200 on page two, about two-thirds of the way down, under item three, where it says Capital Improvement Program. The last item, it says Sewer Retained Earnings, Capital Plan, $200,000. So that's the only change that you have from last week, okay? And that'll show up in their warrant article for them. Any questions?
Because I had to do it, it's pretty rotted, I need to check it out, so.
All right, so with that, are there any questions in terms of the budget? I mean, we talked about, again, the budget article's coming up again, but if you have any questions in terms of the line items, or anything else, any of the shifting around? Okay. So, hearing none, I'm, let's see, moved forward. Our trustee assistant is ill tonight, so I'm taking minutes, so I apologize for my hesitation.
Come on, take a shot here.
I'm waiting questions on you. Do you have any questions? None?
I haven't had ice cream in a while.
Okay. Warrant articles. Would you like to vote on each one, or vote as a whole, with a, so what we normally do is we'll go through each article, I'll present it, I'll summarize it, and if you want to hold it, say hold. If not, we go to the very end. We get to the very end, we have 16 articles or so, we'll vote on 12, 13, or whatever is approved without any holds, and then we'll come back and discuss the hold items. Does that sound okay with everybody?
Yes, we always do it.
Okay. So, Article number one is authorization to pay a prior fiscal year's expense with the water department, $90, which will come out of their retained earnings. Any questions on that one? Okay. Article number two, authorization to amend a previously approved article, that's for an $1,800 approximately increase to the Smith Regional Agricultural High School tuition and transportation assessment cost. Any holds on that one? Okay. Article three would be rescinding the budget that we approved in May. That was Article 14, for the general government operating budget for the town. Any holds on that one? Article four is then the new budget, or amended budget, if you will. That includes the 20, 25 or so line item changes that we've been talking about the last several weeks, and I just mentioned again. Any reason to hold on that one? Okay. Article five and Article six, same thing with the water department. We're going to rescind the article that was approved in May, and then approve Article six, would be the revised budget. Things that we changed, most importantly, was their debt costs. We had their debt schedules revised, so we've changed the number, the overall number, 1.37 is a change, and as part of that, the item two, 13204, changed just slightly, only $700, but the big, big change there was their debt cost. So are there any reasons anyone would like to hold on that? Okay, Article seven, we need to just balance our sick leave buyback fund. We had a couple retirements over the summer, and we need to make sure that's balanced before June 30th of next year, so in order to balance that out, we need to add $1,000 into that reserve fund, all right? Questions on that? Holds on that? Article eight is $5,000 to be added to the Board of Health Site Cleanup Fund. Again, that's a line item, or a reserve account that we use by the Board of Health for any such time that properties get taken for tax title. The Board of Health will pay a contractor to go in and board them up, and so when that's running low, we'd like to add, obviously need to add money to put back in that. Usually have about $10,000 balance in there, so it's getting low, we'd like to add some money to get that account back up. Any questions on that? No holds? All right. Article number nine is the, a capital request for the water department, and that's going to come from retained earnings, and it's $25,000 coming from a quote, Capital Committee will review it tomorrow night, to upgrade their SCADA system, SCADA Security and Communications System. Any questions on that? Holds. Okay, Article 10 is a transfer between capital accounts, so there's no raising of money, there's no appropriating money. Essentially, what we're doing is we're combining some accounts, which will allow us to close out or zero some accounts, combining balances, if you will, and you know how that, we have those capital accounts that sometimes have surplus in them. One of them's the water department, water meters, capital account. They're going to move some accounts around so that we'll have one water department capital efficiency account. Any questions on that? Just a transfer, no raising of money, just moving around. Questions? Holds? No. Article 11 is what I mentioned regarding the sewer department, that's a transfer from retained earnings and from one of their reserve capital accounts for clarifier upgrades at the wastewater treatment plant. Any questions on that? They'll be in front of Capital Committee tomorrow. I'm going to hold on number 12, I'm going to come back to that, just because there's a couple numbers that have X's on them, I just came, I just got those, and I just printed that out before the meeting, so I'm going to move to Article 13. Article 13 is to balance the Town Hall Boiler Replacement Project. We have, we need to balance that account before June 30th, and that's $14,000. Any questions on that? Then Article 14 is an authorization to amend the personnel bylaws. That's making it compliant with the federal law, stating that we will supply benefits on the first day of employment rather than after 30 days. Any question on that? Article 13 is amending the personnel bylaws to put it in line with the collective bargaining agreements that we have, and that is eliminating the sick leave incentive program and amending the personal days by striking three and making it six. Any questions on that? Article 16 is adding a position and rate to the personnel bylaws for the police detail officer, to put it in line with the collective bargaining agreement. Any questions on that? Okay, so if you want, you can vote on all 15 of those articles, holding on to Capital Article number 12, unless there's any other questions.
Just a question on, on the budget. You said that there is opportunities for people to question line items and make a motion to change. Is there enough time to, how do, how do we deal with the, with the impact of changes right there in the spot? Do we, does that have a ripple effect in the budget? Is enough, can you accomplish that in the...
Well, so what I've done, I've shown line item changes within the budget, but the budget is eventually balanced, right? So if someone wants to say, "Okay, I want to add $500,000 to the, whatever, to the Parks and Rec Committee budget," right? So the town moderator, what he'd probably say is, "We can't just add more appropriations than we have, we'd have to decrease something." So there'd have to be some balancing out the budget. They can't appropriate more money than we have revenue for, and he doesn't allow an increase. So if our general government operating budget is 8.9 million, he will not allow an increase to 9.4.
Okay.
Okay? We, that's his rule, moderator, you know, in the past, if you had $75,000 for a dump truck, and it was in the warrant, and you wanted to go to the town meeting and make it $80,000, he would not allow that. So there, he will not allow, short answer, he will not allow increases more than any overall number in the budget, or any other items, okay?
So his ground...
If you have 8.9 million, and someone says, "You know what, I want to shift, for whatever reason, $500,000 from the police account and move it to the cap, the highway account," okay? And we, they can do that, we can approve that, and there'll be some discussion on that.
All you're doing is transferring...
All you're doing is moving within line items.
I see.
You're using extreme as an example.
Yeah, okay.
But you can do that.
That would be nice.
Well, good for one, but not good for the other.
Okay.
So, I mean, obviously, the ripple effect is in any decision that has, will, any decision and any change will have an impact on a department budget. It just depends on the scope of the change, right? So obviously, a scope of $500,000 to our police department obviously devastated, and, you know, probably wouldn't be able to operate. But if you wanted to change $1,000, and you want, for whatever reason, and move it, you know, we'd have to deal with it, or, you know, speak against it, why we don't think it's a good idea, and then let the voters decide whether or not that motion is a good one or isn't. We'd like to think, we're not, well, we're certainly not perfect, but we'd like to think that we have all of our needs addressed. We've gone through all process last January through May, Finance Committee meetings, every department head making presentations in terms of what their needs are, going through items with yourselves, that we think we've put together a pretty good budget, but people could still ask if they want to. I'd rather see, say someone, "What if, what would happen if we took $500,000 out of the police department?" And then I would explain, explain it to them. So I'd like to see that done that way, not to say that someone couldn't, on a piece of paper, write up, and go up to the town moderator and say, "I'd like to amend line item 119," or, "I'd like to change 11900-57,000 to 500,000 instead of a million." All right? Those motions can happen, if people want.
Now...
And then I'll tell them, "Well, it's a good idea," or bad idea.
And the third scenario is where someone just wants to reduce a line, the moderator would entertain that, because it's not, it's not adding...
Well, so let's say, okay, so let's say we have an $8.9 million budget, right? And someone says, "You know what, that's just way too much, whatever, you're spending way too much in Department X. We want you to cut it by $100,000," okay? We, at that point, we don't have a balanced budget zero, right? So I can't submit a recap to the Department of Revenue, because I have more revenue than I have expenses in that case. I have a revenue that will support that 100 grand, just so, so now we have to make a decision. If you don't want to spend the 100 grand out department, we either A, have to spend it on some other line item, or we have to, you know, move it to a reserve account, you know what I mean? You can put it in stabilization or, or, you know, a trust fund or whatever.
I see.
And I would recommend against that because it's part of the operating budget. You wouldn't do that. We would take reserves to replenish reserves, right? Or surplus to, you know, so I would, I would be prepared to explain positive and negatives. And then let the voters decide, you know, again, it's their 8.9 million. If they want to, if they want to, you know, make some changes, that's fine. Certainly within the purview of, of the town meeting voters and that's why we have it. If people want to make changes, they can make changes. But at the end of the day, I got to submit an approved tax rate to the Department of Revenue. It's got to be balanced. So we would have, if someone wanted to decrease a budget line by certain, by something else, I would recommend that we would move it to something else because I have to, at the end of the day, submit a balanced budget to DR. I mean, we have options, right? I mean, we've looked at all things that we've had eliminated over the last five years. I mean, we could certainly, you know, find places to put it and that's maybe something on a, on a quick discussion where we put it. It's kind of extreme, it's kind of a big number I threw out there, but you know what I mean?
I just wondered what, what happens, what, what follows from a, from motions.
So the rule of thumb is no increases to numbers that have been put in here. Shifting line items, like for example, we have capital items. So at the end of the day, if we have $300,000 in capital items and someone says, you know what, I think $3,000 for a copier out of your mind, make it five. And then I say, okay, well, I still got to have 300, so now I have 302. I got to now decrease something else by 2,000 to make it 300. That's what I'd have to do on the fly. Okay?
Okay.
Fair enough?
Okay. Thank you.
So, so much for holding on article 12. So do you want to vote on all the other articles or do you want to just talk, want me to talk about the capital and then just come back and vote on them all? I mean, if you don't have any issues on, on the other 15 articles.
Just talk about this, we'll do it all over.
All right. Fair enough. Okay. So, the, so the, the items that we have, you've been presented, you know, the copier replacement, again, it's a matching grant with a library. So she's going to get a matching grant from the, from the vendor. She's only going to have to pay 50%. Her, her copier's on the way out. I'd like to do that now. Emergency generator was the same thing. We talked about that. We talked about the pages, we talked about the communication upgrades when Bob Parsons was here. If we don't spend that money, we lose about $100,000 or $120,000 in matching grants. Kind of a no brainer, right? The fuel pump card reader, we have $25,000 approved, but the bids have all, have come in. So we usually go in with an estimate from a vendor, you know, what's a good number to carry at town meeting? And then we actually go and get, put out a formal bid, invitation for a bid or an RFP or whatever, advertisement, and then they've come in high. So I need to add 10 to the already 25 that we have so then we can move forward on one of those three estimates.
And that, the card reader is not on a state bid list? That was, that's.
No, no.
Which replaces the one we already have. The one we got is, doesn't work all the time.
Right. I think what John's point is that, when if it's on the state bid list and the number four, number eight should be the same, but you know, it's not that case. That's not, that's not one of the items on the state bid list. Same thing with the garage roof repairs. So the garage roof repairs at Highway Garage, we've had an estimate. Again, sometimes these things take a while to get up to approval by capital committee and then worked into the budget. We talked to an architect last week who said our numbers were low. We didn't have enough for design costs, clerical works types costs and actual cost that, what happens is an architect will, and it changes year to year. So when you're doing a certain type of job in one year, you know what the numbers are coming in when you put them out to bid. The same job the following year because of increase in labor, cost, difficulty of the market, whatever competitiveness, numbers will change. So our architect is telling us that we should carry an additional $55,000 for that project.
That's to replace the whole roof, correct?
Correct.
No more of this patching like we did the last few times.
Correct.
All right.
So that has not gone up to bid?
So that is not. So, because what we're going to have to do is we're actually, that's going to be a formal advertisement, put through the central register, whatever. But since the money's been approved and we went back to our architect, he said, listen, your numbers, the numbers changing, it's going, it's going up. So that's the reason for that. So you have money aside already in order to make it whole. We could advertise it now, come in, overbid and then we just have to rebid it anyway.
I was going to ask about that.
And it still could, it still could come in high and you, we'd be back again adding to that total.
Say again?
Say, when it goes out to bid, we could find ourselves again on the low side?
Correct. So if it's on the low side, we would then take that money and then we would transfer it at a later date.
You got 30 feet in the back, that's all.
Okay. All right. So now my mechanic street repairs. So I think I had, I don't have it in this packet, but, so I had an estimate from, and it was in the, in the report, I think last week for the, for the number for mechanic street. Is that what you're talking about, I can hear?
Yeah.
So mechanic street parking lot, so it would be design services, drainage, scrape up, repair what we have to do now, survey, permit, everything else in the back, and also survey 22 Main or 22 Mechanic, which is the green building above. We're looking at surveying that property and possibly taking that one down. We own that by tax title. So you have the parking lot?
Downstreet.
Yeah, yeah, you have the parking lot?
Yeah.
Then you have the brick building and the next building, we own that now.
Yeah.
So we want to survey that. We have to survey the existing lot, put drainage in there.
Drainage for what?
Stormwater, EPA, that we've been talking about for, there's no drainage in there. If we're going to put any money into that, we got to put drainage in there.
Going with the houses?
No, on the mechanic lot, mechanic lot, that's there now.
All we can do is put a little wall up in the back to stop the water. You got everything else sloped set up right, it goes right down to catchment.
All I want to do is carry a number.
Yeah, okay.
If it comes in less, comes in at 80 or 50 or 60, whatever.
It's going to be less than that, guaranteed.
That's fine. And then the money will be there. But the architect, the engineer told me to carry 20 for engineering permitting and 80 for construction, so.
This is a parking lot. We're not doing the whole, you know, we're not doing something at DCU Center in Worcester, you know?
What I'd rather do, because I have the money now, I'd rather reserve it now and have it come under.
But it's going to definitely.
Then have it 50. We actually spend money when we advertise.
Yeah.
So when we spend money advertising, it comes over, I have to then re-advertise, come back to town meeting, wait six months, all that kind of stuff.
I thought we were going to do this, no?
No. With the eight guys that we have, you want to do it?
Yeah.
Well, the, just like we did with the landfill cap repairs, if there's an opportunity for us to do it and we can do it, we'll do it, we'll save money and that money can be reserved for something else.
We need that bigger project, I hate to tell you, okay?
Well, here's the thing, you want, I have an engineer's estimate for what it would cost to put it out to bid and construct it that way.
Yeah.
All right? So we could do two things. We could do it that way and if it, and do it ourselves and if it comes under, then I have that surplus money and transfer to something else. Or we could put it out to whatever number you think is more appropriate. And then if I advertise it or if we do it ourselves, and we can't do it ourselves for whatever reason and it comes in higher, then I got to re-advertise.
We want to do this next spring, correct?
I want to do this in the spring.
Yeah, okay.
You know? So we, I mean, we got a lot of work with our own eight guys to do in the spring, you know? Clean up after winter, repair sidewalks.
If you're talking about spending $100,000, we can put something else off for a couple of weeks and, and do the job.
Well, like I said, if you want to go with a different number, we can go through a different number or we spend the money and then at the main town meeting, I just transfer it out. And it's, it's not going anywhere. It's going to be the capital reserve account.
That sounds.
So it's not going out the window, we're not, you know, just spending it nilly willy. What we're doing is we're going to set aside a number.
Yeah.
We're going to get it over the.
So this $100,000 to take that building down too?
No.
Okay, that's just.
Just survey it.
All right.
Okay? So you think about what it costs to survey, it's probably five grand just to survey that one lot, you know? Another five or 10 grand just to survey.
I want a job like that. Got to study in school.
And so then you got to design the drainage system and then you got to get permitted because we have stormwater bylaw and get permitted, you know? So, and then actually putting the pavement down.
I think the key is.
But, oh, the other hole.
Who tore the, tore the house, the building down? It's a parking lot now, right here, buddy.
I understand. But one of the other things we want to look, one of the other things that's included in this number is lighting for that parking lot. There's no lighting and that's been some of the complaints from the businesses down there, there's no lighting in the back of that parking lot. So employees are, you know, safety issue. So one of the things we'd like to do is add a light in the back of corner of the parking lot.
There's a pole halfway down there now, so.
Yep, yep, exactly.
Just the idea of extending the pole and putting up a light, not a real big deal.
But money is money, right?
Yeah, okay.
So anyway, so again, if it comes in less, great.
Yeah.
We'll just move it to another capital account, okay? It's not raising anyone's taxes, not, you know, anything like that. It's surplus money that we're going to use for capital, whether it's for this project or another project. Knowing that the mechanic street job needs to be finished in the spring, we're going to come in and we're going to pave, finish pave the road, I'd like to do this at the same time, do it while the binder's down there now so we're not damaging the finished pavement, driving trucks.
Do that before they do the main road.
Exactly. So we'll do the parking lot, come back and pave everything else.
Okay.
I'm all set now.
Perfect. All right. Design services on the two buildings that assume to be torn down would be the Cherry Street Fire Station and then the Pleasant Street School. So my estimate that I received today from your architect is to carry a number of 7,500 to 10,000. So that could cover $10,000. That's to put together specs and plans for cleanup, tear down of those two buildings, okay? Not the actual construction work.
Right.
Okay? You need the design services element a part of that, okay?
So you need an architect to give you a procedure?
Can't just advertise and say, tear it down. Doesn't work that way. I know that's what Bo would like to do, just back up his piece of equipment and tear it down.
How much brain does it take to rip down a stupid building?
Because you have to go.
Especially that one.
Because you have to go through the building, you have to have it analyzed for hazardous materials, asbestos, oil, other stuff.
Why do you have to have an engineer do this? That's, that's just.
That's what the law says.
That's what the law, okay, all right.
All right, so two buildings.
What are you saying?
So, so two buildings.
Yeah.
Five grand each, you got to go in there, do phase one and phase two, DEP, environmental analysis. And then put specs together for tear downs. And then we'll come back at a later date with the actual money, put them out to bid and tear them down, okay? So that's what that tends for. And then the building study would be from doing a complete buildings analysis that includes accessibility, egress, envelope conditions, energy components, evaluations of all finishes, materials, controls, plumbing, everything, 10 grand on each building, okay? So you'd have a, buildings needs assessment that you'd be able to have for each one of those buildings so if you decided to do anything with them, you know what your capital needs are moving forward. So they're going to put together out of that a number and say, in order to get Lake Street School or Maple Street School or Sudden Block in complete working order, you know, after evaluating, you know, 10 years left on the roof, 15 years left on the windows, whatever it is, mechanicals, having that number so that if we decide to sell them, whatever we even want to do with Lake Street, of course, because we think it's a viable property for another use, we want to have that information available, hand that to the Buildings Studies Committee and they can work in terms of their planning, in terms of what to do and move forward, okay?
Let's be clear, it's not, it's, it's building needs, it's, it's not feasibility for other uses.
No, exactly. So it's basically evaluation for each building. So you go through the process of evaluating each building. And then once you go through that process over the winter, what I would recommend is in the spring, once you have that available, is probably have, you know, no more money put aside to do maybe feasibility and design work, especially for Lake Street, maybe not as much as Maple Street and Sudden because those buildings are kind of fixated there, but, but more or less with Lake Street in terms of coming up with viable uses, studying the market, what's available for the green space, the land that you have there, what could you fit for commercial or residential or senior living or parks or whatever? Go through that process, have different drawings put together and then figure out what you want to do with it from there. So we'll come back and worry about that in the spring. Let's just go.
But this is physical.
The next few months, in order to get this committee going, get it appointed, give them something to do, get going, work with an architect on evaluating the buildings, doing, you know, walkthroughs, getting, getting themselves up to speed in terms of the conditions of the building and working.
What can you put aside for that?
10 grand on each. I have, I have a quote of like 9550 on Lake, I have 9750 on Maple and I have 9250 on Sudden. So I was just going to carry 30.
So we get the same guy doing all three buildings?
So this is only proposals for services. So this is what I'm doing, is I'm going out there and looking for quotes.
Yeah.
Okay, so I could use this person or I could then go through the process of interviewing three different companies, you know, and getting quotes on that and then whatever. So typically for the process of, just like on any other, any other capital item, but we use a state bid list or a private vendor, study the market. So in this case, what he did is he had an HVAC engineer, mechanical engineer, you know, a structural engineer all walk through the building just to come up with a proposal of what it would cost to evaluate the building, okay? So that's what I have.
When did he do that?
Steve did it with him last week.
I'm a little confused because you've got a new heating system going into the one school and, and that seems to be a higher number than the rest, something's wrong.
With, in terms of Maple and Lake?
It's drastically wrong, it makes no sense.
Well, what I could do is again, carry the 30 for the number and then just move it around. Or do you want to, you know what I mean? It could be, you could have seven for Maple. I think what's going to happen is you're going to have, not saying that the, I agree with you that some components are newer than others in some, but you're still going to have a valuation of square footage of space, right? So walking up on the roof is going to be the same for all building. Walking into the mechanical room or the boiler room is going to cost the same for each building.
It just seems like a high number that you just, you know, it's not, you're sinking, whatever that number is, I mean, we don't know yet, right?
Oh, in terms of Maple?
Yeah. I mean.
I was going to say, Maple Street versus Lake Street. You know, they, to me, there should be a big difference because Lake Street's twice the size of the building than Maple Street or Sudden Block. And you, you said the prices were all within a.
Well, so 9250 for one, 9550 for another, 9750 for another. So again, and I, and I put, my comfort zone was 10 on each, right? 30. But you could have, like I said, if you have seven on one, that gives you some room on the other. If you want to decrease any one of those buildings, I can do that.
No, I'm not asking you to decrease.
No, no.
I guess, I guess my gut tells me is, how much evaluation do they do on the walkthrough? Because how can you come up with those numbers if you got a bunch of new stuff sitting there? And I guess that's my first.
And that's the only place that, that is the case is Maple Street.
I mean, it's almost like picking a number, I guess is my concern, but.
Yeah, it's, it's a labor, right?
It all makes sense because you got to do it anyways.
That's what we're doing.
Well, I think my point is it's a laboring. So they're going to go and they're going to evaluate the whole, so let's say it's mechanic engineer, right? He's going to go in there, just because you have three new boilers in that building or one with two coming, you know, he's still going to walk, he's going to walk in there, he's going to evaluate, so spend some time.
He's going to look at electrical, I know what he's going to look at.
Awesome. So I think that from a labor standpoint, even though one piece of equipment's got 30 years left on it, another piece of equipment's got 10 years, he's still got to go in there, look at it, write it up.
36.
All that stuff. But again, if we don't spend it, we don't spend it.
No, no, I get it. I just, I always get concerned when we, when we invested, and that's money that was invested, I don't know, two town meetings ago, whenever it was. And, and we already know what's in the pipe work and then you get hit with the same number for three different buildings, which really aren't in the realm of, I don't know, just, just question, that's all.
Fair enough. You want to do anything different or just roll with it?
No, because you got to put it back anyways, I just.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be moved between one of those three buildings, and if any is not spent on that building, it's gonna be put in reserve, or we're gonna transfer it out of there.
Right, yeah. Right. No, I get it, and you're playing it safe.
I'm just playing it safe.
I don't have a problem with that.
I don't wanna go through the process and then get hit with a bill of ten thousand and one dollar, and then a town meeting.
Trust me, I know two selectmen will probably be showing up anyways.
Yeah, exactly. I'm not worried about it. Well, two are on that committee anyway.
I know.
And a third that likes to get involved in buildings, so. So any questions in terms of any other line names on that?
I, to the chair, just a general question on the, on the, wait, let me get back to it. The...
Budget?
The draft, the drafting of the design services.
Yes.
Do we have a, a firm grip on everything we have out for design? I mean, you know, as a town, and if we're using the same, the same, you know, designer for, you know, four different projects, or, or we intend to use the same guy on the roads project, isn't there a way we can get economies of scale here on our, on our cost?
Um, I don't know about something this small. Um, and again, and again...
It's not just this number, I'm just saying in general. You know, I looked at the roads one, for example, I see just...
So what we do, so on a, on a roads project, if we're gonna design a road project, we will get three quotes on it. So we just in Mechanic Street, there was three quotes on it. We just in Chestnut Street, there was three quotes on it. So we will go out and get competitive quotes for that. Here, so I'm just carrying a number.
Yeah.
Right? So I still have the opportunity. I can, I can hire any architect I want. I don't have to hire this guy. You just give me a number. I trust him, you know? And I don't, you know, he's taking his time to come out here and put numbers together and walk through buildings. I'm gonna give him a legitimate opportunity to put a number to something, but I can also get two more quotes if that's what we want. On a five thousand dollar job. You know, I mean, it's, he's, he's already spent a thousand dollars just to come, come, and if you think about it, if he spent, if he had four or five engineers come out here along with himself, plus he met with me before, at a bill-bill rate of a hundred bucks an hour, probably more than that, right? I mean, he's already spent a thousand dollars. So when he's giving me a price of five thousand dollars to put a number together, there's not a lot of room there. There's not a lot of room for profit margin on that. On a job of, let's say, designing Main Street, so the Main Street tip project that we have, and we hired VHB, we actually put together a committee, we hired, we had presentations from engineering companies. You're talking about four, four or five hundred thousand dollars worth of engineering costs. So do you go back to them and say, listen, I want you to design this park, can you do it for ten instead of fifteen? Yeah, we can have those conversations, but, you know, at the end of the day, here, you're not, there's not much economy for scale when you're talking about that.
I, I guess my only issue here is, is basically the bureaucracy of, of engineers, design costs. It seems like we can't get by on any project for less than twenty-five thousand bucks to, to get design done. I just, it just, you know, and same thing with the roads. We assume, throw ten percent in there for, for design, or it just, it just...
The only way towns get around it is they have, a town like Framingham has ten engineers in their office. A town like Holden has three engineers in their office. So they have an engineer who may special, you know, a buildings engineer, or structural engineer, or design services engineer, who can do that stuff in-house. We don't have a lot of things in-house that we can do. So it's kind of like a historic preservationist, you know, I mean, you know, we don't have enough of that work to do to hire, have a historic preservation planner to do all that. So we're gonna hire and outsource someone to do. A town like Framingham or Boston's got ten planners in their office, one's an environmental planner, one's an economic development planner, they can do it all. So we're gonna get involved in hiring consultants, and consultants aren't cheap.
I understand that. I just...
You're a consultant.
Yep, so, right, that's why, that's why I'm questioning it. It's just, I just think, you know, it's sort of like trying to manage your own money, your own budget, and, you know, same thing with your comment about the, the parking lot, you know? It's kind of sense.
Tearing down, tearing down the building. I mean, you go get this best this guy, and you do the same thing. I mean, you go through all this, and you tear it down. It's like tearing down a house. You get the guys that do the things, and then you just come in, you demolish it.
It's completely different in the private sector, public sector.
I understand that. But that is the problem.
Plus, we're dealing with prevailing wages in all these things.
That is, again, these are all the problem with, with these projects.
So especially, look at the roads project, we were just talking about an hour ago. I mean, that's all prevailing wage stuff. If you're doing that all in-house, or you're a private guy doing your own driveway, you're gonna play a different rate than we're gonna pay. And that's just, that's the system we're living in. Unfortunately...
They're all little cottage industries in these, in these, in these projects. It's just a frustration, so I, you know, I, I'm not questioning your numbers.
Yep. Yeah, and again, my numbers, my numbers are gonna be, and I'm not an expert, I'm gonna go out there and I'm gonna get quotes from people that are in the business that are doing it every day, and I'm gonna use that number to carry. And then when we actually go to do the work, we'll go out and actually get competitive quotes, numbers, so that we make sure that we're, you know, doing the best we can. So, all right. So that's all I have for the warrant articles, budget.
So what is our new total there?
So my total is three forty minus eighty. I have eighty in reserve and landfill cap repair. That's a surplus.
Right.
So I'm gonna have two hundred and sixty, um, net. And then with the other free cash items we have, we're gonna total about three hundred and eleven, which will leave us in the six hundred and fifty thousand range moving to the spring, which is, you know, that's where we are last year. So last year, if you recall, we spent about four hundred thousand dollars in balancing the FY fifteen budget, which only left us about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for capital. And we, we still did some capital, and hopefully we won't have. So how good our winter is depends on how much we will spend in capital in the spring.
So our certified free cash was how much?
About nine sixty-five.
Nine sixty-five. And this, this totals?
Three eleven with, oh, this is two sixty, plus thirty-one thousand in the one-time hits and the operation budget from the police hirings, remember that? One thousand, that's going to sick leave reserve, five thousand is going to the board of health site cleanup, and the fourteen that balanced the town hall boiler. So three hundred and eleven in free cash being spent now, which will leave about six hundred and fifty for Springtown Meeting.
So this, the two sixty goes to three eleven? With those?
The number that Article twelve, if you add up all those items on the right, is three forty.
Gotcha.
However, I have eighty thousand dollars in reserve capital account that's already, that's surplus. I'm gonna apply it to this. So that's gonna be a net free cash of two sixty in this one article.
Okay.
Two sixty plus the thirty-one in the operating budget, plus the one from the sick leave, plus the five from the board of health, plus the fourteen from the town hall boiler is three eleven. So three eleven coming off the nine sixty-five leaves you six fifty-four.
Now, you don't, we don't have to show that eighty thousand from the, the cap?
We do. It's in the article above.
It is, yeah.
It's in the narrative.
Oh, in, in the, okay, it's in the narrative. All right, I was looking for it in the list.
So the top item, it's gonna say, the first three X's is gonna be the total amount of three forty. Below that, it's gonna be two sixty in free cash and eighty in landfill cap. That totals the three forty above.
Is that, what is our final figure on the land cap, landfill cap repair?
So we think it's gonna be about, well, we have two accounts of eighty. We think we're gonna be able to do it within the first eighty. And then part of that was because we purchased the excavator and doing some of it ourselves. So that's another one of those cases where we budgeted worst-case scenario. We had free cash reserved, put it aside earmarked towards a project that we had to get done mandated by DP. We had to make repairs to it. And then by being creative, we were able to do it at a reduced cost, and that freed up that eighty thousand dollars to be moved towards another capital item. So that's the same thing, example, I'm using below, when I'm talking about the parking lot, or the garage roof, or the design services. If we have any extra in these, we're gonna apply, we have so many capital needs, so many, it, it's gonna go to good use. But we, but what you need to do in our world, in our business, we can't go out to that bid unless we have the money in hand. So we have to get, go to town meeting, set aside and allocate money earmark toward a specific use before we go out to bid on things. So that's why we like to be conservative. And then the following meeting, after the work's been done, hopefully we've come in under, and we just transfer it, make it available to other uses. We have a twenty-year capital plan that's quite extensive. I mean, ten-year capital plan is quite extensive, so it will always go to some other capital use.
So that certified free cash, it's been about the same now for the past couple of years?
Last three years has been about the same. Before that, we had a huge dip. We dropped down to about two hundred, and that was due to nine C cuts when we had the major economic crash. So what the DOR recommends is that you carry about, I think it's, it's ten percent of your overall budget. So we're still about half of that.
They're about to say two million.
Yeah. So we're half about, at that. So, and then same, and then same thing with our stabilization. We're at about one point oh six six million. So our stabilization and free cash are about the same. We should be probably double that, but we're still, we're still not in a bad situation. One of the things that affect us, obviously, in going forward every year is that we know that we're gonna be bouncing snow and ice in the spring. We undercut budget that. So we know that a good portion of that money every year is going towards that, and then balancing out any new things that come up between now and next May. As you know, the first article, the town meeting warrant, you know, town meeting is, is bouncing anything, new things that come up, you know? So, yeah, and all, and all gonna good use.
That's why we're trying to move that snow and ice budget up, so it's, we don't go through these crazy fluctuations, and we have, we have more of the...
If you can get that up to about the average, which we're still probably about halfway there, if you get it to about, about average, then obviously you're in a good situation, where you're, you're, at that point, you're freeing up the free cash in May, rather than, you know what I mean? You have it available. You know, you'll, you'll always be in a situation where you're gonna need it, but, yeah. We'd rather be at the average than, than where we are now. But within our environment, we're not, so.
Anything else, John?
No, that's good. Thank you.
So you need a, a motion, uh... Well, we usually make a motion to set the articles as written, and then you close it.
We're gonna accept them all now, because both want to wait.
Yeah, you guys messed up my whole plan of holding and all that kind of stuff, so. So, so the first motion is to set the warrant as, as is, or as amended, if you so choose, and then after that, you'll...
With insert the numbers you just gave us.
Yep, and then you close it.
Make a motion to approve the warrant as amended by Adam's three numbers.
The motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we can close the warrant.
Yep.
I don't entertain that motion.
Motion to close the warrant.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Get all that, Adam?
Excellent.
He does shorthand.
I don't wanna go too fast.
He does shorthand. Okay. Next item, discussion, town administrator's goals.
Oh, boy.
Oh, boy, here we go.
Adam put that back in. Some of it you'll remember. You got it there, John?
Aye.
So this is in the revised packet. I didn't have time to get it out last week, so...
Which one, working it out right?
So the second to last page in your packet should be...
It's in that one.
John, you're all out of order there.
Hi, I've got my, my old packet and new packet. I have them together at first. Okay.
There you go. All right. So in my employment agreement, and also as part of our charter, we set goals for the town administrator, which is our working goals with the board of selectmen, other department staff, et cetera, between now and April. We'll close the goals in April because of elections in May, so that you guys have an opportunity to do my review before the elections, in case there's a new board, and you don't want, you know, the first thing for the board, new board to do is evaluate me in the past six months or so, when they haven't been around, if, if there's any changes. So, so this is typical. The, um, they've been pretty consistent, except for a couple of minor things with the budget. The budget, you know, one of the differences in the last couple of years was we had some major deficits, and we had some major extensive presentations and working with staff and discussions between core and elective services and things like that. One thing I changed this year was I added, I could've made it its own goal itself, because I think it's that big of a project, but that's the fifth bullet item, and that's the private nonprofit aimless service agreement. So that's something that we've been working on. Bob and I are working in tandem with the rescue squad in terms of getting all the data collected and evaluating them and having discussions moving forward towards next year. So that's something that's, it's a big undertaking. Bob's helped me out with that. Could be its own goal or not, but I, I left it as part of the budget, because it's, it's gonna impact our budget next July first, so. And we don't have to vote on these tonight. You can vote them on at the next meeting. But that's the, the budget one. The second one, comprehensive roads rehabilitation project, working with the FMPC. It's a huge undertaking that we're gonna be working on in the next six months. So one of some things we've talked about already is we've been coordinating the initial cost breakdown, the analysis with our consultants. We're preparing flyers and handouts, discussions at town meeting, coordinating other mailings, public hearings, talking about tax rate impacts, tax bill impacts, coordinating informational pieces, cable access presentations, newspaper, website, and then working towards potential ballot and warrant questions. So that I left as a separate goal, something we wanna see happen in the next six months. And the third one, I actually combined three and four from last year's goals. Last year's three and four were, one was regionalization, and then one was organizational structure and operational efficiencies. What I'd like to do is, because those usually go in tandem, we're usually regionalizing and affecting our structure and our efficiencies at the same time. That's usually why we're doing it. So I'd like to combine that into one. I think it just makes sense, moving forward.
Yeah, that makes sense.
All right. So if you have other things you wanna talk about, typically what we'll do is you can either email me or Gary at the same time, or, or whatever, talk to me after the meeting, whatever. And what I've done in the past is, you guys give me fifty, and then we'll settle on three or four, right? So, um, but if there's anything else that's on the top of your mind you wanna talk about, or?
I, I'm glad to see, I see the chair, I'm glad to see you organized three into something that we wanted to do for quite a while. That's kind of the operational efficiency. I would like to see, and again, the reason I don't, I'm not, my idea is not to bog you down with more goals. It's also a goal that you could push down through your organization as well. And that's, that is, you know, inventories of procedures and, and, because you're not gonna be able to get operational efficiencies without touching procedures and functions. So I, I may wanna make suggestions to add to that one.
Yep.
Because I think they go hand in hand.
Like adding a bullet point or something?
Yeah.
And I think that was part of the conversation administrator and I started to have today, so.
Yep, and I'm gonna actually, as part of that one, Gary, I think I'm gonna add that as a bullet point under one. We talked about having consultant, having a consultant look at our overall.
Yeah, I think, I think it's the whole structure thing, is it...
So Gary and I were talking about, maybe if you recall, I mentioned about, you know, certain departments having been looked at in a while in terms of, you know, sewer department, sewer departments been talking for years about changing the step and pay grades of their employees and work with the personnel board unsuccessfully. So one of the things Gary and I talked about is maybe it wouldn't be a good idea to bring out maybe a third party, someone that does work. I know that some other towns have done it, where they brought in a consultant to come in and evaluate from an organization-wide, our positions in terms of our grades and how they fit and match up with our comparable communities or other communities. We've heard a lot from certain departments and certain employees when they've made presentations, you know, our, our person X is, you know, at the bottom of their pay scale. And, you know, so it'd be nice to, if we're gonna make any changes with the personnel bylaw structure, and we should have a full evaluation across the board, is what you mentioned before, rather than target one position at a time. That person comes in and says, listen, I have, you know, been looking at this, and reason to believe that, that there's a change to be made. And maybe if we're gonna do it one, we should do it for all, but we might need outside help to do it, so.
I think it's a big, big challenge when you get into efficiency, when you look at it, it functions in job description. You know, Tony, you must face a lot.
I've, I've actually done this work for organizations, so, I mean, you know, we get, we can get deep in this, we get, you know, workflows. This consultant could do workflows, he could do, he could do procedures. And what you're looking for is places where they intersect, you can get efficiencies from. Sometimes you don't even know they exist until the, until they're documented. So...
I, I agree. I think that's...
It could go under one or it could go under three, you know?
To the extent that, if, as we enjoy more operational efficiencies, it helps us rebuild, rebuild our services.
It's kind of where we were.
Yeah, that makes sense. Maybe, maybe the goal should, should link those two more closely, one in, one in three.
This is something that, I don't know, Tony, when did you bring this up? It's a while ago when we started talking about this.
Yeah, it's, it's, I always wanted to, you know, kind of compact, look at how we function, see if there's any way we could bring efficiencies to it. And, you know, maybe...
Which you may not have enough in one area, but you may be overstaffed in another, and maybe you can shift. And I think that's what we were looking at when we first started this.
And again, and either, either you're gonna uncover efficiencies you didn't know were there, or, or, or you're gonna be staffing. You need, you need staffing. So I can, I can try to add some bullets to that, to the chair.
Well, I think there are two different things. One is under, budget would be the grade and pay review analysis, apples to apples. And the third would be more of efficiency, or as you said, we may find that, and I think David mentioned this before, that when you looked at population size, department size, is that the average, say the average police forces seventeen point five would carry sixteen or something like that. So those are the kinds of analysis that you would look at, and know where your, know where your, either your gaps are or your opportunities for movement if there's an excess or surplus in one area.
I'll send some to Mr. Chair, and you get, you and the administrator can decide where it goes, but I would think mine would go under three.
Yep, yep.
Which is a good spot.
Okay. All right. So I'll put that on the agenda for the next meeting, which is, uh, is November tenth, uh, nine.
Like every year, we start somewhere and hope we get somewhere, so.
I mean, to, to me, it's not something that could be, it could be just to initiate it, and show, and show progress towards doing it. I mean, I'm, I'm not gonna...
Right.
Right, and that's kind of where we, I think if we see it start, we feel better than not.
Yep. Okay. All right, so that's all I have for eight.
Okay, board liaison report. Anybody have any?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to mention, because I, I think it's, it's gonna be a critical, critical, critical project coming up. The FMPC met for the second time. We got our, we got organized, and we decided our strategy on moving forward. We're gonna have mailings out to, to our residents soon, detailing, not detailing, but letting them know of a major initiative that we're gonna put in front of them for the spring town meeting, correct?
Correct.
Correct. It's a significant project, and we wanna give, you know, give them an advantage, knowing that it's going on. We'll send that mailing out. We will, we will put something together for the, the fall special town meeting to discuss with, with voters there. And our group is, is getting busy on, on this, on this project.
And it's a big one.
It's a big one.
It's just nice to hear.
We'll, we'll see where it goes, and, but we're, the rubber's starting to hit the road a little bit.
Anybody else?
I don't think I reported on this at the last meeting, because it was a, a workshop, but I met with the new chair of Parks and Rec in Adam's office a, a week ago, and it was good to hear, you know, there, the way they're approaching the, the Parks and Recreation. Again, it's, it's back to trying to, you know, build back some of these services and, and understanding their priorities. And I offered to, to inquire in the community about how, about ways in which we could get support for Park and Rec. And, and one thing I had to respect is that they, they don't wanna sort of restore services, sort of year by year. And that was pretty clear, and that, and I look forward to their, their first meeting in, in November. So we're all on the same page. I, I, I hope Rob was not offended, but I told him I, I really wanna play more than just a reporting role back to the board that I really, and I know I'm not a member of, of the commission, but I wanted to be actively involved in, in, you know, doing some, doing some groundwork and, and some legwork for them, and of course, you know, checking with them before I do anything on my own. But I was, I was encouraged. It sounds like, you know, they've got a, a fresh look, a new spirit there to, you know, to really bring back our Parks and Rec programs, and with a special attention to the condition of the facilities. All that has to be addressed, and some, and some, you know, some creative approaches we've not taken advantage of in the past, so. That was good.
Perfect. Appreciate his response. Okay, nobody else? Citizens input. Take a second shot, guys. Get lonely when you don't talk. Board member or staff comment?
Through the chair, I'd just like to, I've, I've had unofficial conversations with the administrator, but I think we as a board should kind of reach out to the school committee and see where we're at with the major goings on over there.
Yep, I just reached out to the business manager today, who's out of state, and we'll be back next week. So we'll plan on meet, I plan on meeting him with him next week, so. I wanna, obviously, the Lake Street School situation, and then begin budget discussions and talk process. So I'll begin, um, as we go through town meeting, November, I usually put together all of my budget goals and directives for staff for the first week after Thanksgiving. So I'll hopefully have an opportunity to meet with him before then and put together a schedule of meetings and work in tandem with both Spencer Spookford and also with Baypass, so.
And I think he's out until next week.
Yep.
To that extent, I'm reminded that we, we never really had an, an, an official presentation by the new superintendent. Maybe sometime this fall between, you know, between, between Dr. Crowe and Kevin, it'd be nice to, just to have a statement of where the schools are here at the beginning of the year, or, you know, through the first month or so, and looking ahead, I guess. Not any budget numbers at this point, but looking, starting to hear about some of their goals for this, this next school year. I think it would help our communication, since we're talking about, you know, opening up.
Not a bad idea, Jim.
Opening up, um, the channels here.
Okay.
Before we finish that, on Lake Street School, do we officially get that back now?
No.
No.
Nope.
So, they're so responsible for it?
Correct.
All right, well, I'm gonna get in with Roger, and we're gonna go up there and go over to Lake Street School and turn the heat on, down to like fifty, just so we don't have any problems with the building between now, and we'll be officially get it back, so I'm gonna be with Roger and go up there and go over...
Yep, to serve everyone's benefit, Roger, who works with the school department.
Yeah, he's, yeah, he's the head janitor of the school department.
There's damage being done up there right now, too.
Yep.
And, um, are we gonna, so we don't get, so like, happened to Lake Street School, they shut the power off, they shut everything off, and then we had to go mess around and put it back, so can we coordinate that when they officially give it back, that we can, you know?
The official date as, uh, as of now is the thirtieth.
Well, I'll meet next, I don't think, I don't think, I think it's, it's going beyond that.
But...
It's obviously going beyond that, because...
We know.
It's going beyond, I'm better to say it than it's going beyond Friday.
It's not gonna happen.
Friday's the thirtieth, it's not gonna happen.
Okay, all right, I just wanna make sure...
So, we, I, I wanna meet with the business manager next year, uh, next week, I'll get a better idea of where they stand.
But that was a goal, and, and there's no way it can happen at that time.
Mr. Chair, I'd also like to mention that I went to Congressman McGovern's, uh, bus...
Sorry, thank you?
Yeah, thank you, very, what a lovely picture. And, you know, I met with a bunch of people, he, they were, they were selling local farming, local, local tourism, and I met with a bunch of people, and John, I got a bunch of cards that I'll share with you. I made it clear that, that, you know, we're, we're coming out of malaise, and we wanna work on economic development, and, uh, if, if, you know, and Congressman McGovern's office was, uh, very open to helping us, uh, with the, that we needed help on, so, we also cornered the gentleman and begged for, uh, help on thirty-one, so, it was a, it was a ni, it was a nice evening over at the Red Maple Inn.
Okay, uh, are we doing Item Twelve, Adam?
Yeah. Yes, please.
Okay, we have a request for executive session of the Mass Laws, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One-A, Paragraph Two, for the purpose of discussing contact, contract negotiations with the non-union personnel.